Looks like pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it was.
All right, ground's properly worked.
When we have, when we have one meeting a month, it's pretty important to me. One minute is always important, but real.
Yes, it is. We have a councilman that has a fever. And one that ripped his cap. Oh, good Lord! Hipper aside, I know it's green, my bad. I've done it. I was trying to run faster than a UT, uh, a UT Dallas track star and blew my cap out. All right, it's time. I'll now call to order this meeting of the City of White House Council for today, October the twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-four. It is six P M. Ms. Hargis, will you please call the roll?
That's our James Wonsley.
Here.
Zach Briscoe.
Here.
Georgia Harris.
Here.
John Chambers. Michael Lowe.
Here.
And Matt Lazary. We have form.
Excellent. Councilman Briscoe, would you please leave your little prayer? Would you please stand if you're able and join Councilman Briscoe as he leads us in a word of prayer?
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for all your many blessings and please guide us tonight as we conduct our city's business. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join the council in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Excellent, wow. We have a great room for this tonight. All right, that takes us down to item D, presentations. We have a presentation for Black Hawk Creek Trail. Ms. Lily Adams, Ford Project Scholar, her final project presentation. Please join us at the podium and state your name and let's see what you got.
My name is Lily Adams. So, a year ago, I joined y'all with the effort to propose my project ideas because in May of two thousand and twenty-four, I was selected to be a two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four Ford Leadership Scholar for the Texas FFA. And so basically what that program is, just to kind of give some background if you don't remember or unaware, that is a program created about fifteen years ago through the Texas FFA and the Texas Ford Dealers. And what they do is every year they select ten juniors across the state to put on a community service project within their own community during their senior year of high school. And then in the summer of the following year, then you go to the State Convention, present the ideas and get a scholarship out of it. And so with this title, I was able to come back to White House, speak with Mayor Wonsley and the city manager, and we threw some ideas back and forth and we came to the idea of taking my project to the Black Hawk Creek Trails. I have a deep passion for wildlife, for agriculture, and for leadership and service. And so this project was a very big thing for me within my life because I was able to highlight every aspect that I was interested in and had a passion for. So, my mission of the project, just to kind of keep my goals focused and really stay on track, was to cultivate a sustainable wildlife education and recreation element to the Black Hawk Creek Trail by the summer of two thousand and twenty-four. And in order to accomplish that mission, I had four steps. So the first step was to do man-made habitats. I wanted to kind of ease into this project as fully and as I can, as I could. And so with that, I made some handmade habitats. And then I put in a trailhead at the trail. Then I did an elementary wildlife education tribute. And then lastly, to wrap everything together, I advocated about my project. So to kind of dive into each one, as I said, I wanted to kind of ease into my project. I didn't want to get too head, ahead too fast and bite off more than I could chew. So I began with man-made habitats of wood duck boxes. I built four of those total. They stand about three feet tall, about one foot wide, and they're about four feet off the ground in four different areas at the trail. Now, this was a very cool project. I've never heard of duck boxes prior to my project. And so from there, I kind of got started to thinking of, well, what other kind of habitats are there? And that's when I discovered bat boxes and owl houses. I know in East Texas, we have a wide population of all three species, including ducks, bats, and owls, in addition to all the other wildlife and birds out there. So for bat boxes, I purchased two of those. Um, the research that I did said they can fit about a hundred bats in them. I don't know if they're, if that's a hundred percent true. But that is the goal. And then I also purchased two owl houses. They are about a foot tall, so just more smaller fowl creatures, um, hopefully owls. But again, we're not discriminating in this project, so anybody who loves, welcome in there. And then lastly, a birdhouse was donated by Tractor Supply, so I threw that up in the tree as well. And then here's some pictures of my project that it took for the boxes. Um, the duck boxes were completely made by hand because I got a good donation to do that and to develop those projects and see what it takes to build a duck box. And so I used Ducks Unlimited, uh, box structure and ideas and had a lot of help with the Agmet Department at my school as well as my dad. And I got up there and spent many hours making those. Um, and then of course, the bat boxes and owl houses. So if you ever do get to go up to the trails, those are all along there, so it's a cool thing to kind of look up and see those. And then the second part of my project, this was a very cool part of it because I got to help a lot out with this, which I didn't think I was going to, but I really wanted to be able to have my own touch to this. Um, so I put a trailhead at the trails. And that is the first thing that you see now as soon as you drive into the property. It was a collaboration between the local groups and businesses among White House. It stands at about eight feet tall from the ground. It was cut and welded by the White House at High School Agriculture Department. I made the design with the help of the engineering program at White House. And then I was able to cut it and help weld it and get it put out on the trail. All of the costs were completely donated. It did take a long time because I was, I did run into a few problems, but that really opened my eyes to see how big of a project this was and it helped me gain those skills to overcome those obstacles. Um, and I was really good at networking within this project because of the funding that it took to make it, because of the work that had to be put into it. Everything that was put into it took a lot of people. And with that, we were able to come up with this sign. And the wood in the back was donated by Mr. Chris Jennings. He so graciously put that up there, which I think makes it so much more beautiful and makes it stand out more. And then the third part of our project was the Elementary Wildlife Education Tribute. This was, I believe, May tenth of this year. We collaborated with Higgins Elementary School right down the street, where we spent a full morning with about fifteen high school volunteers and then a couple volunteers through Keep White House Beautiful. We had about ten booths across the high, across the elementary school. And we did all wildlife-themed activities with the fourth and fifth graders. We had about two hundred students and attendants. I saw all of them running around and engaging in activities. It took all the energy out of me, just spend a morning out there with them, but it was a lot of fun. It was very good seeing the passion that I had. I was able to see that passion in those little kids' eyes, which just made my heart happy for the rest of the year. So that was a really fun activity and I was so grateful for the help that I had. And lastly, to kind of wrap everything together, I really wanted to advocate for this project by wrapping everything together and just spreading word about what I did and what can be done in the future. So the first part of my advocacy was the State Convention. It, I went to Houston on July eleventh of this year and I met back up with the other ten scholars across the state. And we spent a full day of giving presentations. We had news interviews come out. We walked the stage of one of the fifteen thousand FFA members from across the state and just to be recognized for what, all the work, hard work that we've done. And then we just got to reminisce about the year that we had and share our ideas with the sponsors and the facilitators. So that was a really fun day and lots of smiles going around. Then the second part, I did a couple local news spotlights, so hopefully y'all are going to see those on your local news channels. But K E T K and K L T V reached out to me towards the end of my project, so I was able to invite them out to the trail. I was able to, again, advocate for everything that I've done. I got to show them my sign, my duck boxes, and spread the word about how people among our community who are, maybe you don't get to be a Ford Leadership Scholar, but just anyone in our community, how they can go out and do a project similar to that, or even add on to everything that I've done to the trails. And then lastly, um, our sponsors and partnerships. So none of this project would have been possible without the amazing sponsors and partners that I've had along the way. The Agmet Department, Agriculture Department with my high school, they were really good mentors on how we should do this project and all the steps it should take. Then I have Keep White House Beautiful, so you have Ms. Cory Edson. She gave me a lot of good advice. They provided funds for the Elementary Wildlife Day as well as the sign. Mr. James Wonsley donated, Mr. and Mrs. Chris Jennings, or Miss, yeah, Mr. the Jennings, they donated. Uh, Tractor Supply, they donated materials, Rock Moors, uh, Parks and Rec Foundation, Miss Debbie Shafer. So a lot of people provided so much advice and again, I would not have been able to do any of it without them. So again, thank you to everyone. And they got some really cool banners that we would get at board shows. It's just thanks to them for the work. So again, thank you. And then here's some extra pictures to highlight some of the fun things that I've got to do.
Any comments from council?
What was your biggest takeaway from all this?
I believe that the obstacles that I faced were the biggest takeaways that I could use towards my future. Because I have a lot of ahead of me, I'm a very big goal-oriented person. And so having those obstacles and being able to ask for help and get the help needed really opened my eyes to what life will endure, what I'll have to see in the future. And so I believe having that with especially getting funds and donations, that was a really big tough part for me because I'm not really comfortable doing that. But having those obstacles, learning from them, and using that in my future are some of the things to take with.
Good.
I think you will be an inspiration for other people. Oftentimes in our area, like our other areas, when you do something, it triggers things in other people's heads too about doing projects. And, uh, question I have is, have you seen any owls or any bats? Or have you actually seen the, I mean, I think that is the coolest thing.
Yes, sir. I've seen bats for sure. I haven't seen bats out there because I don't really want to go into the trail at night, but I've seen them.
Well, it's getting that time, the perfect time of the year, Halloween.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's true. Uh, I've seen them in my backyard for sure, and I have seen a couple owls there. And I've heard of them because I go out early in the morning and I see them.
That's so cool.
Yes, sir.
Outstanding job.
Thank you.
Yeah, great job.
And, and also the donors, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, I agree with that.
And great presentation.
Yes.
Ten out of ten. And, uh, yeah, thanks for finding ways forward. I know you hit a lot of obstacles. And if you're a type A plan or doer person, you'll learn that there's, some of them you can't run through. Some of them you have to find a way around and it requires patience and diligence. And sometimes you get a lot of good things out of that and you wind up meeting new people or learning new things about yourself. And it sounds like you've experienced some of that. And one of the new people that you've met along the way is Mr. Chris Jennings. Mr. Jennings, will you join us up here right quick? I believe you have something to say about this.
So I can tell you, I was out there last night with seven-year-olds and we did see bats. We actually stopped looking at the bat house there by the creek and there was a bat. And so, very, very cool. And the kids absolutely loved it. So, Miss Debbie Shafer is going to be our oncoming directors. Mr. Ernie LaFleur is going to be our outgoing treasurer and I will be outgoing president. So it is my honor, as my last official duty as outgoing president, to issue this ticket of recognition for outstanding contributions to the community, enhancing the quality of life, and dedicated service to the City of White House.
Thank you.
And after you go out and get educated and take on the world, remember White House is a great place to come. All right, so that takes us to item D, Eagle Scout Project Presentation by Riley Rao. Did I say your last name right, Riley?
Yes, sir.
All right, excellent, thank you. Welcome. Could you please state your name and let us know what you got?
Uh, my name is Riley Rao and I'm here to hopefully get the approval of the city council to proceed with my Eagle project. As it says on here, it's at the Black Hawk Creek Trail in White House. And both the trail manager, Justin Brown, and my Boy Scout troop told me to go to y'all and make sure I had y'all's approval before I continued. So the concept of my project is after the severe rain we had earlier this year, it washed away a lot of that, a lot of the higher parts, portions of the trail, washed all that loose dirt off and left a bunch of stumps and real big divots that really made it hard for the bike riders. So Justin Brown, uh, just got me to this. And my plan is to hopefully dig out all that sand that's collected at the bottom of this big L-shaped trail and then rebuild it with some, I guess, piping underneath it and have water go through it. A little more in-depth, uh, version of my plan is to clear out, uh, any things we can, any brush that we can work through it, clean up the sand, as I said, then build up this rock wall with piping through it and then build up the, I guess you'd say, the up slope area. So debris would hit that wall before it went through the pipe or onto the trail. And then finally, put a nice layer of dirt all over it, cover it up, compact it, and make it pleasurable to ride on. When it goes to materials, pretty much everything that's out there, uh, these, there's a lot of loose aggregate, uh, big mounds of it that's plenty enough to cover that trail. And there's some loose piping that would be good to recycle into this project. And then tools, just need shovels, wheelbarrows, and plenty of help from both my Boy Scout troop and plenty of clubs at the high school. And hopefully it looks like that with a nice solid foundation and we'll be able to stay there for many years for many bike riders.
Awesome. So this was, uh, from the recommendation of Justin Brown? So I'm sure you learned a lot in this process.
Yes, sir.
As he identified the project and you just had to wrap your head around it, right?
Yes, sir, and I looked at, uh, several examples from other places they used to flow the water underneath any part of the trail that had been washed out before. Just thought to apply that to this right here.
Awesome.
Washout. This is a lot of labor.
It is.
You're about to be sweating.
No, he's got a skid steer. He won't take care of it.
You said there are sources onsite? Is it those aggregate deposits that are kind of behind the fence? Oh, good, I'm glad those are being used.
Was the washout bad, really bad, real, real?
Yeah, I mean, it pretty much was for that, especially because it was steep, steep slope in that middle portion.
Yeah.
Uh, especially where it has, I guess, that gray area, that kind of V into it and all of that kind of just slowed down. So I wanted to build that up.
Great project, yeah, that's good.
Any, any concerns from council on him proceeding with this project?
Not at all, I think it'll be great.
Plenty of water.
Yeah?
The floodcoals off.
Yeah, let us know when it's happening, we'll make a day of it.
Yeah, uh, this is, this is the second last step before I can get a date for that out there. I just got to get the approval of our scout council and then I'll be good to go. So, yeah, I can definitely let y'all know. And they also like a signature, so I don't know if...
No, we can do that, yeah. Mrs. Black, take care of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Riley, excellent job, buddy.
Yeah, thanks for choosing our trails to put your work towards, appreciate it. All right, it's a great way to start a meeting.
Sure is.
Down to item E, community interest. We have a few things of interest here, Mrs. Black?
Mayor and Council, the Youth Community Council, in conjunction with the REC, will be hosting an outdoor movie this Saturday, October twenty-sixth, beginning at six P M. over at the REC. And they're showing Adam's family, so it'll be a good time. One oh nine Main Street, the renovations continue down in city center. They've been doing a lot of concrete pouring this week and steel framing has gone up, steel framing has gone up. And we're excited about the progress that you're able to see over there right now. Just as a reminder, Christmas on Main will be Saturday, December seventh, all day right here in City Park. I did see a news story today, and I noticed Jean Keenan with Public Services is here. I did see a news article today that the Rivers Recycling Plan is still planning to open in June or July of two thousand and twenty-five.
Wow.
So that's what he said, so we'll see.
With, 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 with a...
That's the owner's, not Jean, sorry.
Good job, Jean.
To put Jean on the spot.
With a sprinkler system this time.
I saw that this afternoon and, and, uh, that's what they're saying. So we'll keep, continue to keep an eye on that.
Excellent.
And then I also wanted to let you all know that we did receive the donation from the Parks and Recreation Foundation for the money that they collected for the Veterans Memorial Brick Project. And that amount totaled six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. And so we appreciate the work that the foundation did with the Youth Community Council and the city to make that project come to fruition.
Excellent. It will also be picking up the large plaque that's going to go on the Veterans Memorial. Um, that'll be this week. It's big, it's thirty inches.
That's great.
I mean, it's big and it's going to be affixed, um, right to that big concrete part. So that, in conjunction with the school, we'll, we'll get that in there. And that was another Boy Scout project, the flags and that, um, yeah, that big placard on there, so that's going to look really nice. We hope to get it done in, in time for Memorial or Veterans Day, so that's what we're going for.
Mrs. Black, will we have another walkthrough soon of one oh nine?
Um, I can, we can look at getting something scheduled.
Just wondering.
I don't have anything scheduled.
I mean, it's coming on now, it's, it's starting to get visual. I just think they're going to beat the deadline, I don't know. I don't know, I know, I'm cautiously optimistic. But when I start seeing steel frames, I get excited, you know?
Yeah, that's coming together. It's good seeing more walls coming up and going down these days. I think that's amazing, I mean, no more findings. Anything else from council on the subject of community interest? All right, that takes us to our public forum. I didn't see any signups for that.
That's correct.
Ms. Hargis, that's correct, okay? So we'll skip down to the consent agenda. We have a number of items on the consent agenda, but I will note that item number one, the minutes, uh, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting on September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. There's a correction to be made for that, so we will take that out of this package of consent agenda items. We'll be considering as we pass them as a package and we'll discuss that, um, in just a moment. It's a small correction, it's, it's like a, uh, administrative thing that needs to happen. So we'll be considering item number two, discussion consideration and action of ordinance twenty-four dash one zero two-two dash zero one, official newspaper ordinance. Number three, the quarterly investment report. Number four, discussion consideration and action on resolution R twenty-four dash one zero two-two dash zero one, investment policy. Discussion consideration and action on resolution R twenty-four dash zero, one zero two-two dash two, White House Financial Policies and Procedures, Internal Controls Policy as needed for the Community Development Block Grant, C B D, C D, B G, MIT, Brazilian Communities Program. And item number six, discussion consideration and action on our TikTok policy. All right, with items two through six in consideration, if there's nothing else to be taken out of the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion with the rest of the mass presenting.
Motion to approve as two through six as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, Councilman Briscoe, a second from Councilwoman Harris. And any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, with that, it passes, so let's go back to item one. Ms. Hargis, were you, were you addressing this one?
I can. Um, as you were saying, Mayor, there are, there was one item in the minutes from the last meeting. Um, you have copies that look like this at your place. Um, it was just a matter of the wording of the first motion, um, on item H two. It needed to be changed, um, to reflect that the item died for lack of a second. I see.
So there's that. Any questions or further discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda item one with those corrections.
Motion to approve consent agenda item one with these corrections in front of us.
Six.
Okay, motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. But that, that consent agenda item passes as well. That takes us down to item H one, other action items, ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings. Number one is discussion consideration and action on resolution R twenty-four dash one zero two-two dash zero three, submitting the City of White House nomination for members to serve on the Smith County Appraisal District SCAD Board of Directors. One moment, please. Mrs. Black?
Mayor and Council, we received notification from the Smith County Appraisal District that due to state law, there's been some changes in how they take recommendations and the number of spots that they have on their board of directors. And they were seeking nominations from each of their, um, member bodies for people to serve on their board of directors. I reached out to each council member individually to see if there's anyone you'd like to nominate. Council member Lowe has nominated Mr. Ernie LaFleur to serve, or to be nominated to serve on the board of directors. Believe he's spoken with Mr. LaFleur and he has agreed to, uh, accept that nomination if that's what you would like to make. Mr. LaFleur is present tonight, if you have any questions, um, staff is happy to help if that's needed.
Yeah, that's a, I mean, that's a great nomination. Thanks for taking the opportunity to serve.
Well, I got off of one item, so I think I got something else.
You need to fill some time.
You're not busy enough.
So there's a voting process and the City of White House itself is kind of behind on that. I think the number of votes you get reflects the amount of, of property taxes that go into the pool of county property taxes. So you'll see the schools have a lot of votes, larger cities have a lot of votes. So we need to get out there, we need to beat the drum, get Ernie in there so that he can get another job that doesn't pay anything.
Point, Larry.
I agree.
I'm not sure where I stepped myself into that.
I'm sure if there's any wrinkles, you'll figure out how to iron them out once you're in there. So thanks for stepping up for that. Thank you for your recommendation, Councilman Lowe?
Yes, sir.
All right, with that, that is our recommendation, our one and only recommendation to join that board. Um, or join the ballot, actually, to be a member of that board. So any, any questions or discussion about that nomination? Oh, it is noted in the forms that we have attached that the deadline for that has already passed, but, um, Mrs. Black has had a conversation with the nominating committee and it's fine if we pass it here and she's going to send it right to them, it'll still make it in. So if there's any concerns about that. All right, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, Council, to approve resolution R twenty-four dash one zero two-two dash oh two, White House Financial Policies and Procedures.
That is, uh...
That's incorrect.
One, one down, each one.
One, I'm sorry. Motion to approve resolution R twenty-four dash one zero two-two dash zero three. Ernie LaFleur.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And with that, you're in there, Ernie. All right, item H two, discussion consideration and action on authorizing the mayor to sign an affidavit of ownership for a property, a portion of the property located on four oh five Shandy. I was surprised to see my name as somebody that was taking control of property, so, um, yeah, let's hear about it, Ms. Harris.
Yes, sir, Mayor. And as I was working on getting some additional streetlights on Shandy at the request of a, a resident there, it was discovered that, um, one of the property I, I wanted to propose to put this on is four oh five Shandy. And the Encore had requested that we clear some of that right of way out so they would be able to set the pole. And in doing that, I needed to get a survey done so we knew, needed to mark the corners so we know where to go and do the work. That was discovered, the surveyor discovered that a portion of the property that was platted over to us back in the 80s was not completely done correctly. And so what this paper tonight will do is solidify and say yes, that this is our property. We've owned this property since the 80s when it was platted. It's been known to be ours. So that, that is, at the advice of our city attorney, this document is needed.
So for 44 years, we have been managing and operating this property as if it was platted to us?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
So we believe every party involved in that transaction...
Understood that was the case.
Understood that was the case, so this is simply cleaning up the administrative part of that property exchange.
How big a, how big a piece of property is this? I mean, I don't, is it tiny?
No, it's a city lot. It's a, it's a city lot.
City lot, okay, okay. Well, another place for the owls, you know?
Or streetlights.
Yeah.
Streetlights.
Any, any pushback that you can see for this ownership being made?
Not that I know of. The city man, or the city attorney and I spoke about this and we don't anticipate any because, as you said, we've been owning and operating this for 40-something years now. I don't think there's going to be an issue.
So Mayor and Council, for a little bit of kind of background, when a development is platted originally, it is not uncommon for developers to designate portions of that development that are then platted as over to the city. We do it with streets. When new streets go in, those are platted to the city. And so sometimes those just don't get reported correctly. This is very different than something like eminent domain where a person is living. That is not what this is. This is just simply cleaning up an administrative error during the plating process, probably when this development was built back in the 80s.
Could we sell this one day?
It's floodplain. I mean, I guess we could, but...
It's not, it's not, if anything, it's floodplating.
My understanding is these are normally like green belts and flood things that...
That's what we wind up with. We wind up with the floodplains and undevelopable, undevelopable properties.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that seems to track, like, especially now. I mean, I saw that it might have been a floodplain.
You can put an owl box up there.
Yeah.
If that makes you feel better.
I'm just thinking of...
Any other questions or comments from council on this one? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign an affidavit of ownership for a portion of the property located at 405 Shandy in White House.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, with that, it passes. We now own what's, that which we've already owned. All right, H3...
Not nine.
Sorry? Oh, H3. Other action, oh wait. Consider future agenda items. Let's do that.
And we do have a few things for our November meeting and just as a reminder, that meeting will be moved up one week, so it'll be on the third Tuesday of the month in November due to Thanksgiving holiday and the election canvassing requirements. So we are still working with the city of Tyler to revise our IT contract for a couple of reasons. Adding on City Center changes that contract quite a bit. Also, the redundant fiber that you all had approved previously, we're trying to work that information back into that contract. So it's taking a little bit to work through their processes and ours. We will canvas the election and we have an item on there for you all to consider appointments or reappointments to the city's boards and commissioners.
Excellent.
And where else may come up between now and then.
All right, anything else from council on... Agenda items, future agenda items? I was just changing that appointment in my calendar right quick. Third, the third Tuesday in November.
Yeah, I think mine's good.
Okay. Anything else that you guys can think of?
Yeah.
All right, that takes us down to item I, administrative reports. We're gonna receive reports from staff. There they are.
Mayor and Council, most notable, Ms. LaScarpina, instructor, informed me today she received the sales tax information. As you can see, it's considerably lower than what we've received in the past. We will start working on tracking that information down to give an explanation for that. It's largely related to a single sales taxpayer, so hopefully we can narrow down.
You think we'll wash, wash through that pretty soon?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know what the...
Yeah.
If, if it's a major sales taxpayer that either went out of business or changed their business model, it could continue. But we need, I don't have enough information to answer that question.
And the October sales tax column shows the taxes collected in September. They just, they post in October.
I'm sorry, we paused it. It was October because I wanted to add the 25 to split.
Boy, that's just, wow, interesting.
Things like that, I want to budget conservatively. But we'll see how it goes.
I don't know, I mean, that's... I think it's two months' worth. After the monetary call, yes, sure, it's two months, two months.
Okay. We'll get that worked out.
Yeah.
Water revenue? Oh, we caught up a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay. I was, and this is related to our investment report that we saw and it kind of pertains to that previous slide for our interest rates. We, we seem to be still getting some pretty good interest rates on our, our investments. Whatever mechanism we chose for that was a, was a good one.
It's a, an investment pool for municipalities and the way, I believe they pay interest daily. Is that right, Jennifer? So it is pretty advantageous for us to keep particularly our certificate of obligation money, American Rescue Plan funds, those that are taking a little bit longer for us to spend, to keep it in those higher earning funds to really maximize that as much as we can.
That's good. Is Oc, is October really empty for permits? Residential permits? Oh, no, that would be every year.
Yes, yes, because we're in October.
Oh, it's the...
But even for 21, 22?
Oh, no, I did look at that and there were none for, that's, it's historically, there's no permits in October.
Just people don't just, wow, okay. Got pretty active code enforcement in August.
I just want to say something good about that. Y'all have done an excellent job on a couple of streets that really are impressive. And hats off to the city. I mean, good, it's not an easy task. It's just not an easy task. And there's a couple of properties on duty that I was informed that the cleanup's fixing to start. So, yeah, anyway, but it just makes the city look so nice, much better.
We've had a couple of things that I think have come together that have really helped in our development department. So I would say that, as you can tell from looking at these numbers, our new development has kind of stabilized versus what we were seeing in 2021 and 2022. That post-COVID was just, it was a lot, but adding, adding positions and then house inspector and code enforcement officer and then adding Morgan as our permit technician has really helped expand the capacity for our Development Services Department to do things like code enforcement that in the past were falling a little bit by the wayside so that we could focus on the half to get done during the day. And so I think we're seeing that investment in our development department really pay off. Not only because they've added more people, but because those people are working hard and working together to make those things happen.
Yes, very much so. Appreciate it.
We did get the fire response times corrected for this report, so those have been, if you remember, the last time we were having a little bit of issues with those showing up.
Yeah, that's great.
So I was looking at all the green numbers in August. That looks out of whack, but it was still, it was, it was only four minutes and 13 seconds. So these charts, because they're so tight, make it look a little out of whack, but they're doing a great job of responding. And I've been very busy this past week or couple of weeks with fire prevention, visiting all of our elementary schools.
When we respond to like an MOU, like a, an event that's outside the city, does that go towards our response times?
Those times include our responses in the county for our interlocal agreements, yes.
Agreed.
Wow.
Good stuff.
But that, that has our frequency going out has lessened because they're having full-time staff stations in our proximity here. So our frequency is lower, but yeah, that, that does include.
Yeah, that's still pretty awesome.
And they're responding a lot more to first aid calls than, say, three, four years ago. Doing an excellent job of response.
As a whole, you look at the graph, our calls from service from 2018 to date have just about doubled.
Yep.
And to your point, Councilmember Lowe, you can see the portion that are EMS.
Oh, yeah, it's incredible, yeah. Boy, we need rain ban.
So people are speeding. By that.
Seems like there's always plenty of business in the speeding department, you know?
Right.
It just never fails.
I mean, way more.
Well, Mayor and Council, in June and July, you'll have to remember that we have our school resource officers are then on patrol and so...
True.
Yeah, but I mean, even...
There's more of an opportunity to enforce that on our side of things. Oh, I don't, it doesn't necessarily mean there's more speeders. It means that we have more enforcement during the summer.
There's not a, there's not a year-over-year comparison there, but I, I would assume it's probably about the same every year. Can you go, can you scroll up a little bit? There we go. Thank you. You'll notice we post our Facebook numbers, but no TikTok numbers.
I think we just banned TikTok.
We did. All right. Looking great. Any questions or comments from council on the administrative reports or the income statement that was attached? Hearing none, we'll go down to item J, executive session, of which we have none, so we don't need to K reconvene. That takes us to L. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any conversation? No. Hearing that, we are adjourned. Stay if you like. But not too long.
Sandwiches will be served at 10 o'clock.